I call the meeting to order of the October 6, 2014 city council meeting. And if you would stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, on the third, you with your all.
Councilmember Mayor?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Altough?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison, Bureau, and Mayor Haggis.
Here. Thank you. Uh, item two is approval of the agenda and the additions or corrections.
I would like to, um, change the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to change the agenda to, um, put council comments after the city manager's report. Like it is in all the other departments.
Uh, we've been operating like this for a long time. Wouldn't make any difference to me, but, uh, we've done this for years. This was way up.
I'll second it.
Alright, there's a motion to second to amend the agenda to move council comments, uh, to after the manager's report. So I call third question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Have those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay.
Any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
I will for approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
And move consecutive to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, then we have three sets of minutes to, uh, consider. Uh, we'll take them in order. The meeting of the regular, uh, city council meeting of, uh, September 15th. Those are from packet. Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of the September 15th regular meeting.
I'll support. I'll second.
And move consecutive to, uh, adapt the minutes of the September 15th meeting. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Um, on the resolution that we did for the gaming license, um, I think we have to do that over because we, um, did a blank piece of paper. And in our charter states that we can't do a blank piece of part of paper. So legally, we didn't do anything because we haven't written on the paper. We never see the wording, nothing.
Uh, that's, that's a separate item from, from the minutes, so.
Okay.
But the question right now is for the minutes.
Okay.
All those in favor of the, uh, September 15 regular meeting minutes? Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, now I'll entertain your question to the, uh, gaming license.
Yes.
I guess I don't understand about.
Well, we, we okayed a blank piece of paper.
We okayed a gaming license that we were going to support White's Bridge Historical?
But it wasn't all written out. The resolution wasn't all written out for us to approve.
That wasn't, uh, what we passed wasn't a resolution. We passed a, uh, approval endorsing, uh, the White's Bridge Historical Society and gave them support for their activity.
Okay.
The paper that we were given here was filled out as a document, uh, which is state required, and so that was just filled in, but, uh, the approval was, uh, given for this, uh, endorsement of the White's Bridge.
Alright, but I think next time it should be approved. We should have everything written out before we approve.
Alright, that's a procedural matter, and maybe we can take that into consideration.
Well, if I could clarify, the piece of paper you're looking at refers to the action that you took, and the blanks had to be filled in after you actually took the actions. The blanks could be filled in in twenty months to the action.
Correct. The motion by Ellison is supported by Altough. Yeah.
Yep. I just want to make sure everything was one hundred percent right.
It is.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
I'd just like to comment because we did start, after we do pass a resolution, you make sure we have a copy of it at the next meeting so we can make sure that it was correct.
That's right.
So I, I see this, right, right. Usually it's, it's with our packet, so I, I appreciate the fact that we had it filled in and so we could look at it. But I understand what you're saying.
Yep.
But usually we have it afterwards and if there's any problems, I mean.
Okay, moving on to the, uh, work sessions. We have two of those, so we'll take the first one, September 17th. Again, those minutes are there for approval, uh, and review, changes or corrections.
I move that we approve the, uh, minutes of the council workshop on September 17th.
I will second.
And move consecutive to approve the work session minutes of September 17th. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? And finally, there was another one on September 29th, the work session, and those minutes are also here. Any additions or corrections to those?
I will move for approval of the, uh, September 29 minutes as presented.
I'll second.
And move consecutive to adapt the minutes of the September 29 work session. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on then to accounts payable. Again, similarly, they're there. Any questions?
Large amounts because of the tax collection, I see. I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
Well, it's, um, it's still difficult to read.
Wait, we need a second before we have a discussion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, then a second is?
No.
Yes, sir.
Just the last, the ending ones, I think it's still very difficult for me to read. Um, I don't know how easy this for you guys at all. It's really confusing. It'd be just a lot easier if we could get something, a beginning and ending balance. And it's way too difficult and too much paperwork to be looking at, and to try to approve it when you can't understand what you're reading. I don't agree with you, I think as well. Need to have some other user-friendly format for those numbers.
You know, I agree with you, hundred percent. I think we should have, um, a beginning and ending balance in every department for the, so that we know how much is left in every department in the budget every month. And I don't see what, and we've asked for, I've asked for it for, let's see, four years, almost eight, nine months, and I've never gotten it, and I think it's about time we get it because it is really hard. It takes too long. Like right now, how much money is left in, um, the equipment fund from last year?
That would be in an annual report, I believe, at the end of the year.
Well, no, no, wait a minute. Because I never figured it out from last year. That's why I was asking. So how much money is left in the equipment fund for capital expenditures from last year? How much was spent?
We're working on it.
That's, I mean, it's pretty quick. It's easy.
Actually, I'm not working on that. I'm working on putting up on the screen the report that you get every month that gives you exactly what you're asking for.
Yeah.
And I think when this came up at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, we had a discussion about it, and, and I showed you, and I showed the council members the monthly reports that have been, financial reports that have been given to the council members that give the balance for every fund, every department. What you're approving here is the bills. You're, you're working with checks.
What we're discussing, up to. We're discussing.
And so what, um, you get on a monthly basis as part of the monthly reports is the financial reports that show you a beginning and ending balance for every fund and for every department. So really, all you need to do is take last month's, if you have questions about the checks that have been written, take last month's monthly report. If you have a question about a specific one, then, um, look at the monthly report and you can see what the balance was last month. Um, you can make that comparison. But it, it, it really is, it's true different operations. On one, it's just bringing the checks, and the other is you making the balance reports.
Alright, I understand that part, you know, the accounts payable part.
What we have before us is a listing of the bills that we're asked to approve them.
That part isn't in my question, I guess. Maybe it's specifying that we clarify, not, um, the ending, come on, we want to be at the end of the month for that one. Now.
So you're looking for more of a financial statement than an accounting.
Yeah.
So you don't say it right or whatever.
Yeah, something like that. It is terribly hard to understand that for me. I'm not an accountant. It's very difficult for me.
Well, what we have before us is, is the bills. Uh, the bills that are, uh, come due in the last two weeks, and that's for approval. So, actually, three weeks, but, yeah. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, the bills to pay them as presented to us. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Perhaps we can look at having, uh, monthly, or if you have questions, you can always stop in the same work order.
I don't have time to stop all the time. I don't have the free time that you have, and when, I want to know how much money is left in a de, in a department. I just want to read it. I mean, the citizens want to read it. If, if, I don't know how much money was left in the, the equipment fund last year to carry over to this year. You just talked to me, so I'm talking to you. So I would like that. So do I have to make a motion to talk about it, or can't we talk about it? Because you've already told us that we can't talk, we approved the agenda, so we got to wait till the council comments, and then do it then? Okay, I will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving on then to citizen comments.
Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Oh, yes, thank you. I'm sorry. Yes, a roll call.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Haggis?
Yes. Thank you for keeping me on. Thank you. Uh, item five, uh, six is, five, yes. Oh, we're only, yeah. Item five, citizen comments for items that do not appear on the agenda, so if any citizen would like to address the council, this would be the time to do that. Seeing none of that, we will move on to item six, our own business, and we've got, uh, two categories here. One is a strategic goals report. I'll back that one first. Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Under, uh, promote accomplishments, we promote the back to MDOT's made adjustments to the timing of the lights on Main Street, Hudson Street, and ask for public input. We asked for public input back from our Facebook page, and we'll be passing those comments on to MDOT. Um, on the street asset management plan, we discussed the progress being made on the street asset management plan in your September 17 workshop, and also discussed in detail why the plan is important to make the most efficient use of available resources to extend the remaining service life of the street system. Uh, the street rating process has been completed by the Green Valley Metro Council, and they're working with Williams &amp; Works to identify estimated cost for appropriate mix of fixes. And, uh, the next step will be to use Roadstock, Roadsoft to model a plan over a ten-year period. I'll add that I had, we had some discussion at the workshop about a list of the street projects that have been completed, and I passed that, um, list out to you. It may need some explanation, I mean, you have to answer some questions afterwards, but it, um, shows you on the right-hand side those, those five columns. That's the mix of fixes for streets, and it shows you the years that, um, those fixes were applied to a specific segment of the street, and then, um, also shows you the last time that, uh, they, actually, your segment of the street received some treatment. So that's the comprehensive list of our street projects, uh, going back to, at least, nineteen ninety-seven. Um, inflow and infiltration mitigation, Prime and Newmont presented its report in your September 29 workshop. You asked what impact the project could have on rates, and I'll be preparing those calculations for you. We expect to come to you in the next month or so for discussion and, and decision during your council meeting about whether or not to proceed with the project. Um, and I would reiterate again, if you have any other questions, please get those to me ahead of time if you can so that I can get answers, um, especially on a project like this. I don't have all the answers. The engineers have all the answers. So I would need to consult with them if you have any questions. Um, on our community cleanup project, the second valueless trailer park cleanup project is being coordinated with our October 11 community cleanup, which is coming up this Saturday. And then the pilot leaf disposal project, you discussed this item in your September 17 workshop, with the consensus that we have explored this sufficiently, but that this is not a project we're able to accomplish, and so we're calling aside the people there. And that's all I have for strategic rules.
Alright. Any questions or concerns, uh, concerning the strategic plan? Then we'll move on to the pending council project report, which are also in the packet, and, um, I may further review here on this.
Um, I can, they're, they're all updated. I can update those maybe to the members of the public. Downtown tower removal, uh, we've issued a request for proposals to have downtown tower removed and sold. Uh, deadline for submitting proposals is October 17. We hope to bring a recommendation to you at your October 20 meeting and expect to have tower removed by the end of November. Um, at my disposal, our engineering firm has been in contact with the DQ and has been informed that my application on agricultural land is now being handled by the Department of Agriculture. It was effective September 16. So we're working with both departments to determine how we're going to proceed. Um, on electrical, underground electrical lines, um, that's actually an issue on your agenda tonight, so I assume we can have a discussion there. Trash ordinance update, uh, we completed drafts to make improvements in the trash ordinance, and have also developed rules to go along with, um, the ordinance. This will be the agenda in a future workshop to go over that, that draft. And then, um, right away, I believe that's a future agenda item as well.
Any questions or concerns with pending council reports? Seeing none, then we'll move on to item seven, new business, and, uh, item A is, uh, Light and Power MERS Retiree COLA. Okay. MERS is municipal employees' management system.
Mhm.
COLA is cost of living adjustment.
Correct.
Sure.
And LMP is the Light and Power Board, and they recommended that, uh, you approve a one point six nine, uh, COLA increase for LMP retirees, and a memo from, uh, where Pierce has attached for more information.
Alright. Questions or concerns with the, uh, adjustment there?
This has been passed by the Little Light and Power Board, approved already, so I assume that they have the funding for that, and, and they want us to also have our approval.
I will make a motion to, to approve the, uh, recommendation of the Light and Power Board to adopt flexible benefit E option for retirement retirees at one point six nine percent COLA increase for 2014.
I'll second that.
And move consecutive to, uh, do that.
There you go.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, uh, we'll recognize, uh, before we take the vote. Yes, sir?
Ralph Parker, I think, the council's aware of, um, employees. I just, in regards to their, um, this retirement system, I was just curious if the city is intending on, um, having an increase for their employees for the same retirement system, um, increases that follow suit with Light and Power and how they're doing on their retirement, but under this subject. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, I'll press that, just, just moment, our question here is stuff concerning Light and Power, uh, so we have a motion and a second. And so, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? Uh, we will be discussing that as part of our, uh, budget review, and, uh, the last couple of years, we've been, uh, a little tight on our, uh, finances. We've not been able to keep up to the same, um, schedule that Light and Power has been able to, but we're doing the best that we can to do that. Moving on then to item B, underground wire ordinances. And, Mr. Hall's given us a, uh, a little, uh, description here that during a recent workshop, uh, you, meaning council, discussed, uh, putting the standards for burial of underground wires by Light and Power into an ordinance. You asked that this item be placed on your next regular meeting agenda, and, uh, I've been enlightened that, uh, sometimes we don't need an ordinance to do things that are, things that occur to ourselves, but rather that would be a policy. Now, if we had, had an ordinance that, and I think our next item will be dealing with, uh, new power lines, uh, but it could be any utility lines, uh, that might, uh, involve AT&amp;T, uh, other services, uh, that would probably fall under an ordinance that would affect other, uh, outside companies, but something that's internal is more of a policy, decision rather than, than ordinance. But nonetheless, uh, we're talking about standards for burial of underground wires, so, uh, that's what this, what I guess our discussion would be.
Is to follow policy.
Okay.
Alright. What, when we make a policy, aren't we supposed to follow it?
Yes, we are.
So if we don't follow it, what are the consequences? What are they?
I guess that would vary, uh, it depends on what the policy says. Yeah.
Well, the policy says that, alright, let's say Light and Power's policy says that all, all underground wire, primary wire should be buried thirty-six inches or deep, or at the least, and be encased in scheduled conduit. That's their policy. So we shouldn't even be here talking about this right now.
I thoroughly agree.
I do, but I went through the right channels, I thought, to have this taken care of. I took it to our city manager, and he came back with some.
Any comment?
Yeah.
Oh, wait.
And, and basically, nothing got done. We got a couple of letters back and forth, but it's still a safety contract, or, um, condition. I, I watched a board meeting for Light and Power, and no one once said in that meeting that they had a policy. They went back wishing, wishing, thinking that we had to make a new policy. They have a policy. And they, and you were at that meeting, and you know they have a policy. If you don't, you shouldn't be there. But anyways, Mr. Hall knows they have a policy. He's seen a copy of it. You've all seen a copy of it because I gave it to you.
Yes.
And you didn't say a word in that meeting. You let them go back and forth and think that it was no big deal. And then one of their board members says, what is the chances of somebody hitting them two little lines? A hundred percent, because they did. So, and you're think, you think that this is funny. You're sitting there smiling. This is, this is serious. And there's still nothing been done. It's been seven, almost seven months. And they broke a policy. Their policy. Not somebody else's. And you sat there and think like it's no big deal. You said in the meeting, you could have said something, and you did not say nothing. But yet, when Mr. Pierce asked you to bring up a thing back to give their employee, or the retirement people a raise, you brought that right back to this meeting. But you did not convey our wishes to them to take care of that underground wire, not once.
You're wrong.
Did you convey that to them? You said that in the meeting? You sat there and you said that, and it just disappeared?
Mr. Altough, we've had that discussion. Mr. Hall.
I looked at the city charter, and if there's anything for us to do as a council, I can't find it. The charter calls for Light and Power to be independent with its own board. The only requirement for the city council is to review the documentation for our budget. Now, if you want to make a recommendation as a citizen, go to their meeting.
You're talking. A person should go to their meeting.
A person should go to their meeting. There's nothing that gives authority to the city manager to convey any of this.
What is the city manager's job? Okay, I thought he was turning, "Puppy, stop."
Let me stop. Let you stop.
Alright.
Okay. Anyway, I'm getting sick and tired of this playground bully controlling our meetings, or trying to.
So you think?
I'm done.
So you think? You think, you think that the, alright, can I talk now?
I will recognize Mr. Altough. Go ahead, sir.
So you think it's alright that something gets, primary wire can be buried fourteen inches deep in the wrong conduit, in an area that some young kid could drive a stake in to put a flag up because his manager didn't know it was only fourteen inches deep?
Okay, we've had this discussion.
No, well, and, but do you think that's okay? I'm asking him that question. I get to ask him. I'll ask it through you then, if you want to turn around and tell him what I said.
Because of the nature of this discussion, I think it's best that we get back to the roll, so you will be, you'll be, uh, addressing me.
Okay, I will.
And I think Mr. Hall does, here, here's if he can hear what's going on.
Okay, does he think that that, Mr. Hall just, could you ask Mr. Hall if he think it's okay that we bury conduit that deep? I ask him. I, no, it isn't. It's, I want to do it, because we wouldn't even be here if they followed their own policy.
We've had the discussion about the policy before. Uh, Ms. Covert.
Peggy Covert, Miami, two North Washington. As a ratepayer, it does really concern me what I see going on here, because as I understand it, there is no body that oversees our Light and Power Board, or our Light and Power Company, except for this city council. Most utility companies are overseen by some state overseer of some type. We don't have anything like that because this is a privately owned company. So I have to support Mr. Altough in the fact that if you don't do it and they're not doing it, then where are we as customers and ratepayers protected from liability that will come back on our company and us as ratepayers? So if that is what I understand is the, the level of accountability, that they have no accountability except to this council. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
Um, a couple of comments if I may?
Yes, sir.
Uh, first of all, it was represented that, uh, this issue was brought to the city manager, and nothing was done. Um, as a matter of fact, the city manager spent over forty hours investigating this issue, um, put together a report of that investigation, and submitted it to the city council, and also submitted it to the Light and Power General Manager. Um, that was, I believe, put, uh, I believe, uh, put to question, uh, in the appropriate field, which should be with the Light and Power Board, where they should have some discussion about this. The Light and Power Board has had discussion on this issue. It is the Light and Power policy. They can change that policy. They can, um, adopt, you know, various changes to the policy. They can also create exceptions to that policy. Suzie, can you switch to number four for me, please? That's no different than the discussion that you had tonight where you have rules procedure for a council meeting. And the rules procedure for your council meeting specifically state the order of business for your agenda, and that order of business specifically states the council comments is item H, monthly reports is item I, and the manager's report is item J. By a vote of the council, you could decide to change the order of that. And you didn't, but you could decide to do that. This policy on underground wires is no different than that, I know. If the Light and Power Board decides that it wants to create an exception to the policy, they can do that. And whether they've done that or not, I don't know. I'm not going to comment on it, but I'm just, I, I, I think I'm saying that the appropriate level for this discussion is at the Light and Power Board, unless you want to go through the process of creating the ordinance, which I have recently found, gave me the, um, direction to talk to the city attorney about creating an ordinance, and he said that, um, we would not create an ordinance for our own internal operations, we would do that through policy. So we're back to policy.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I have a couple of my own comments on here about that underground. I just printed off from Low Lane Powers operating policy just before here, uh, it says, conduits for underground primary shall be installed not less than thirty-six inches below final grade. Conduits for secondary, no less than twenty-four. That's great. It didn't happen, for one. We know that. So we're not arguing. So we're not arguing that it didn't happen. What are we going to do about it? What we're arguing. Then, he, he and I talked about it some weeks ago. We, and, and I have a memo from you, too, Greg Pierce, about, you know, hey, this guy your lawyer, what are we doing about it? Anyway, he says that, that, uh, "The conduits were more than three feet in the ground at the time of inspection." That's great. And you had the conduit measured, and you wrote what they are and where. They're a foot off, a foot short of where they should be, according to the policy and of what fund grade was. And in other places, they're sixteen and seventeen inches short. That's a lot of dirt to be taken out. And an old guy had brought some of the dirt in, and he didn't take any out. So where is this dirt going? And what do you, what do you do? Do you take the wire out, rebury it? Or do you add dirt on top of it? It's about it. I mean, it's subpar. It's ridiculous how far off it is. It's not a couple inches. And then, on a memo on May twenty-second, to you, Mr. Pierce says, "There is no specific requirement for depth of service." But the service reform request, service request form that the committee fell out says it's a depth of twenty-four inches, but they prefer thirty. And at the bottom, "Any labor hours for site visits and engineering due to the information provided being incomplete or incorrect will result in additional charges being billed to the responsible party," whoever that was, Light and Power, or the responsible M, subcontractor, whatever. Um, it's got to be fixed. We know what to do with it. Why are we just talking about it? And I know it's coming up in the end of October meeting, but it needs action, because the ground is not getting any softer. It needs action. And more talking about it isn't doing anybody any favors, especially us.
We've had this discussion with Mr. Hall. Is that you want to say something?
No.
Yes?
I, I would like to say something, too. I mean, we know it's been a problem. It's a low Light and Power Board, and a low Light and Power manager problem. We directed them, or asked them to, to work on it. We have our own responsibilities here. Yes, we're overseeing that. We're supposed to be getting a report on it. At that time, or at any low Light and Power, Light and Power Board meeting, we could go and talk to the city manager, and talk to the board, and do that. But this is a city council meeting, and this is about policy. You know, this is on our radar. We've asked that something be done about it. We've asked for a report on it. Maybe it's not as quickly as we need it, but, you know, things move slowly, unfortunately too slowly. I mean, that's frustrating. It's very frustrating. I understand that. But we're following the procedure, and what, doing what we're supposed to do with it. Attend a low Light and Power Board meeting, talk to the board members, talk to Mr. Pierce. They're going to give us a, you know, an update. But that's not the city council. We don't go tell Dan how to do his job, or anyone, other departments. I mean, if there's something to be done, the city manager passes it along, which he has done. We're waiting for the results of that.
I don't mean to, to be misunderstood. I'm not telling, telling how to do their job. I don't mean that.
Just do it.
I want you to do it.
Right.
You know? Just do it. You know it has to be done. It was wrong in the first place. It's still wrong now. It's got to be fixed.
And I'm hoping for that for October twentieth, for the report. We'll get it. Closure. I'd love to have closure.
Yes?
Yes. In, in all fairness, the last time we talked about this at your workshop, you said you wanted something back from them in the month of October, preferably one of your two meetings. And I reported back to you that, that they said they would come to your October twenty meeting, and then we put this on your October six meeting, um, without waiting for the response that they were going to give us at the October twenty meeting. So we're a little, so we're a little ahead of ourselves, I think.
Maybe the answer is coming, on October twentieth. Mr. Pierce is in the audience, along with Mr. Cantfield. I think this gives him a mighty fine heads up, so.
And for us, it's about underground wire ordinances. And, and that's what we asked Mark, would you look to see, do we need our own ordinance? And that's what he did. He's saying that policy is what is needed.
This would be a girl's help, not just like...
Yeah, right, right. And that's, so he, our city manager, did what he asked him to do, to investigate that. If there was any policy, which is what the city council's job is, to set policy and, you know, there's nothing that we are doing or not doing that we should be.
We've had a nice, healthy discussion on this, but then the next, uh, item, item C is here. Quick, quick, yes?
Just, just to clarify, in your city charter, in section sixteen point three, responsibilities of the board for city, for the city's electric utility, subject to the general direction of the council. So they are at your direction. And I asked you at the beginning of, I think, last month, to please direct them. As a ratepayer, I don't feel that I get responses from them when I've tried to, to talk about these kinds of things. So I'm not going to their meetings any longer. But I've asked you, as council, to direct them, for our sakes, to get this fixed, because you are the only overseer for that board and that company. So just for liability's sake, it concerns me, from what I understand, with this kind of power, somebody, if, if that power gets into the ground, somebody could step into that ground and just fall down dead. And the next person tried to help them, and the same thing could happen. And that's the kind of thing that we're always worried about with, with electric power lines. So just please, make sure that this gets taken care of, and just not, not just reported back on again, but fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Item C is similar, but a little different, uh, new underground wires policy. During a recent workshop, you discussed requiring new power lines to be installed underground. You asked this ad to be placed on your next regular meeting agenda, and that discussion we had many years ago also, in terms of just all, probably, as the city of Portland has done, most of their electrics is, most, not all, most, is underground. And they adopted the policy about thirty years ago to phase into moving their utilities underground, not just electric wires, but all, all utilities. And it is a beautiful community, without all kinds of infrastructure overhead. But, so our discussion here is requiring new power lines, and I would think that we would want us to include all utilities, cable TV, telephone, yada, yada.
Yada, yada.
So the direction we're looking for?
I would like, do, do we just get to talk about this?
Yes, we do. It's an expert discussion.
Because I want to make sure that I can talk. Okay. Um, this was a Light and Power policy, policy, um, a few years ago. And I thought it was real good policy. Their board of directors saw it was a real good policy, because they wish, you know, they started it. But somewhere down the line, it got changed, which is, you know, their right to change it. But I think as a city council, I think that we should make a policy that everything new should be underground. I think that makes the city look better. We're a tree city, USA. We're planting hundreds of trees, and a lot of them are still going to be under the power lines. A lot of them already are. And it would be nice that every time they do an upgrade, we stop cutting trees. In, in the long run, it's going to save them money, because they don't have trouble, don't have complaints from the citizens. And, and maybe in fifty or a hundred years, we'll have some fifty and a hundred year old trees again.
Anyone else?
I'm of the opinion that it could be extremely costly. A lot of people are on cell phones now, so phone company probably really wouldn't care. I'm concerned that Comcast won't even take down the cable that runs across the river. They certainly wouldn't be thinking about every line that they have going underground. Here again, I think if the utility came and, and wanted to talk about it, or negotiate it, or something, then we can listen to it. But to make it a policy, no, I'm, I'm against it.
Got it.
I mean, I'd like to see it, but it is really expensive. And I remember when they talked about putting the lines at Richards Park, uh, Low Light and Power, can we put them underground? It was so cost prohibitive that they decided not to do that. So I think maybe forcing someone to do that, if they can't afford it, business might think about locating elsewhere. I don't know. I mean, I'd love to see the ground, you know, I wish we had enough money to do that, but...
We've already done it once. And we, they had the, they had the policy, they did it.
But did they enforce it?
Yeah, they didn't, and they quit. I never see, now, wait a minute, I'm talking. I never seen where they took that policy off the book. See, this is the whole thing. If you look back through all their minutes, they never did away with that policy. They never updated it. They never amended it. They just quit doing it. That's what I'm getting at. You have a policy, it's the law. The policy is the law. It's, that's just what it is. And not to follow it is not right. So why, otherwise, why wouldn't we even make a policy? Right? It's just like the ordinances. They're still, it's the law. It's, it's a rule that we have, and a rule that should be enforced.
And obviously, something that went away. Excuse me.
It can't go away. It has to be taken off. It just can't go away. It was never discussed in not one single minute.
Well...
And no new policy was, well, and no new policy was written, well, was, but it was just omitted.
All right. I hate to throw this out here, but we used to have a sidewalk ordinance, and we never enforced that either.
Well, I...
So, I mean, there are things that slipped through the cracks, and, you know, we never changed it, but we didn't enforce it. So we assisted citizens and took care of it and caught it up. Just because you have it and you don't enforce it, I mean, maybe they need to remove it. But if they haven't enforced it, there is a reason, probably. I don't know why, but probably the money involved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, perhaps the, the question is very similar to the very fair question that you asked at your workshop regarding the workstation upgrade, and that was the impact of race using. Good point. So maybe that would be something we need to spend a little more time talking about during a workshop session, and maybe we could do that, and include our friends from Light and Power as part of that, and, or have a co-meeting with Light and Power Board, and look at what the impact would be locally. But again, I think this is a broader policy, uh, in ordinance to include all utilities, so it's a little broader stroke. But I think perhaps this is an ongoing discussion, we should include it in our next workshop.
Okay.
Is that good?
I'd like to say, this is something we've talked about before. We keep going back to things we've talked about before, over and over again. We keep spinning our wheels. Doesn't hurt to look at something again, but I think we're using a lot of our time looking at things that were looked at before and didn't work, and now we're going back, you know. I, I think we need to be careful about our time and how we're using our resources, going back over and over, things that have been decided. That's my comment about all of that. There's several items that I just feel, been there, done that. Let's move on. We've got so many good things we need to be doing.
And the LCTV fund, during a recent workshop, you discussed using interest during the next year from the LCTV fund towards street improvement projects. You asked this ad to be placed in your next regular meeting agenda for further discussion. So the conversation here would be, uh, having, uh, some discussion about using the interest of the LCTV dollar fund for street improvements.
Well, that's what usually ends up happening every year. We use it. And the whole discussion was, if we're going to do that, we need to just let everyone know there's no sense of, of wasting their time for the, for looking for a grant, because I think it's totally unfair to the, to the LCTV fund board to have to sit there and argue about what the money's going to get used for. And I don't think it's fair to Sharon to have to be a council person and be our rep and say, "We want all the money," because that's basically what we want, for some of us. So if we're going to do it, I think that we should be upfront and honest about it. Otherwise, we shouldn't take a dime and let it go back to the, the way it was supposed to be. I tried to get money for streets out of it before it even started, and Sharon said no at the last moment. But now she's right there going after it. So I don't think that, I don't think that's right. So if, if you want to take it, I would think we should be upfront and honest about it and tell them right now.
Anyone else?
Why, but it's a process.
I'm in agreement that the city, end of residents, I think, have said that streets are a priority. And this money is an obvious way to increase the amount of money that we can spend annually on, on streets. Um, I would suggest that we look at this annually, um, and maybe close to when the budgets are put together, April, and make a determination that we're going to continue. But I, I think that we should be looking at a hundred percent of the interest going to, dedicated to street funds. And I say it annually, because we don't know what's going to be coming up on an annual basis. There may be something that's a greater priority, but at this point, at least my priority is to get the streets done as, as much as we can, as quickly as we can. And I think this helps us.
I'd like to say a little something, because I was on the group, and then helped establish a committee and a way to determine grants and how we use the money. And I said no to streets right away, because there were other needs as well, and I didn't want to close it down and say it can only be used for streets. By having that interest money open for whatever might be the best use of the money, was my intent. It wasn't no to streets, although that's what everyone was so afraid it would be used exclusively for. There have been some excellent grants given out on that fund. And I think that, you know, there are a lot of other things that we could do with the money, but at this time, and I like the annual, I thought, I agree with Mr. Hall, Council Member Hall, that at this time, I think the most important thing is the streets. I don't want to say from now on, we're taking all the money for streets. Hopefully, we won't need it for streets forever, but at this time, and I think for us to look at it annually, I don't know if this is something we would want to have a public hearing on, or if we're just going to make the decision, we have the authorization to do so. I, I don't want to say forever to use it on the streets, but right now, I agree, I think we do need to use that money for streets. What good is a park if you can't get there because the potholes are wrecking your car? I mean, there are so many good projects, but that's the most needed. It's a need, not a want.
I agree with Sharon, and so, my opinion would be similarly, I would agree on the annual review, because we don't know what's going to be out there year after year. I think it's a little different approach, so I would say that perhaps if we drew fifty percent and then had fifty percent available to enhance the community through various nonprofits and/or other projects, that would still be funded through the LCTV dollars. But, so I would like to, I would prefer a fifty-fifty thing, or fifty percent would be dedicated to the streets, and fifty percent be... the streets and 50% be allocated as the committee would so deem to various causes and groups.
Item, go ahead, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Don Steyer, by 21 Elizabeth Street.
Yes, sir.
You're talking about streets. Sidewalks were done, what, three years ago or so? Did a nice, nice job on it, by the way. I live on a corner of Elizabeth and Amity, and if you go all the way to Main Street, all the way to the end of Amity, and over to Alden Nash, you will see that all the side, there's sidewalks there. Now, you got a couple of schools there for the, you know, kids walk on the sidewalk. There's one area that has no sidewalks, and that's on the corner of Elizabeth and Amity, going, from the school, you'd be going east to Lincoln Lake, you know, the side road there. I don't understand why they didn't put sidewalks in. That's in front of my yard, and, you know, I don't plan on paying for it, but why it wasn't done, I don't know. So what the kids do, they walk partway, and then there's, you know, walking in the street, and it's very dangerous. And I just want to make a comment, you're talking about the streets, but you're not done with the sidewalks. There is an area that is in desperate need to have a sidewalk in, and we're only talking about, I don't know, what, 200 yards, you know, sidewalk being put in? And I just want to bring it to your attention that, you know, if the council could, you know, look into that, I appreciate that. All right? Thank you. I agree with Jim on the 50%, just for the fact that we're going to be upfront and honest, because we're not, if we're going to say we're going to do that, that's what, that's all I, that's all I want to talk about this about, because why say that there's all that money to be had, and then we take 50% of it? So if they know that there's only this amount of money, there, a lot of them aren't going to go, you know, even bother going right in the ramp, because it takes a lot of time. But, so, I just, that way they know there's only half the money, or all the money, whatever we decide. But it's just the part of being upfront about it, not waiting until the last minute and then saying, "Well, the city's going to take it." That's, that's why I wanted this on here.
I would be against the 50%. To do 50%, then who's going to determine what that other 50% is going to be used for? Are you still going to keep the committee in there and say, "Okay, well, this year I've decided that we're taking 100%, but next year, maybe we'll bait you with 50%?" I think you have to make a damn decision. 100%, whatever you decide, do it, but dragging it out like this is, it's kind of ridiculous. I think 100% is the only way to go.
I will make a motion to take 100% of the money from the LCTV interest to put into the streets.
If that's a motion, then I...
That's a motion.
I will support your motion.
And that would be for calendar year?
I will second his motion.
Thank you. And just to clarify, that would be for one year?
One year.
Until 2015.
Okay. Then, and then we, at the time we're doing this, I'd also like to put in there that we have an annual review at this time every year, so that everyone knows. Is that okay?
Not with me.
Okay.
I would much rather do it when we're putting the budgets together.
Okay.
So, by the first of April, of May, June, May, first of May, excuse me, would, I think, would give us enough time.
I agree with you there.
So whatever that was amended.
Well, as I understand the motion, it would be 100% of the LCTV endowment interest for the year 2015 would be used for streets.
Local streets?
Yes. City mall, city mall streets.
Local streets, not major streets, local streets.
All right. That's the motion. All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Pass it to you, Allison.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. We'll begin on to item eight, council comments. Mr. Mayor? The authority hasn't met yet, you don't meet until the 20th? Go ahead. Mr. Altav?
I'd like to make a comment about the last workshop we had. We had a workshop to discuss basically the budget, and we had on the agenda to discuss the budget of the police department, not to contract them out. And because of the way, and I don't know how it got brought up, that we were even thinking about that, because we weren't thinking about that, we were talking about the budget, and we wanted to see if there was ways we could cut it. And so I would still like to have another workshop on the police department budget, because we, we really didn't get to discuss what we wanted to discuss. And I wasn't the one that brought this up to begin with, it was Mr. Hall, and I agreed with him. And we, so I think that every department in the city has made cuts. I know that they've made cuts, but we have to, if we don't have the money to do things, we're understaffed at City Hall because Mark doesn't have enough time to get stuff done, so maybe he needs more help. But I just think it was, I don't know how the part about farming it out to the state or the county ever got brought into it, we never brought that up, we just wanted to look at the budget. And we didn't...
I think you're wrong, I brought it up.
Oh, just, this conference?
Yeah. The other thing is, is the wastewater treatment plant. The reason I brought that up to look at is because it's going to be, the contracts coming up in the, in this year, and it just seems like that things slip by us, time goes fast, we, and we don't do it, and then all of a sudden, it, oops, their contracts do, and we never got a chance to look into really what we should be doing is seeing which way is the best way to go. And I do think it needs to be looked into. The other thing is, Mr. Hall made, made the statement that he didn't have enough time to look into all this stuff. That is his job, if we ask him to do something. I think that the wastewater treatment plant should be put on the strategic plan, and it should be number one, because it's a big, it's a big deal. It's, I, I haven't figured it all out yet, I've looked at it, but if other cities are running their own plants, and why aren't we? And if, and if contracting is so good, then maybe we should contract out the police department, because he said that it's good, it was all right to do this, but maybe it isn't. We were told years ago that no one could run our water treatment plant any cheaper than we could. And I just think that we should look into it. Things have changed, there's more help out there, if we need extra help, it's available. We contract with a lot of companies that can give us extra help if we need it, and I think there's a savings there. But we should look into it, not, not make it look like we're, we're going to do away with the contractor, just look into it and get fair and reliable information, not, don't go out and look for the most expensive or plate, or the cheapest place and say we can't do it any cheaper, just get, go to cities and talk with them and see what's up, because if they're doing it, we can do it. The other thing is, they're going to start, they're going to start hauling manure into the, to the biodigested place pretty soon, and part of their agreement to do that was that they reduce Smith Street, and that street is undone. And they're going to start bringing them big trucks full of manure in there, and it's not just the, the one that they bought, they're going to bring 30 or 40 loads of liquid manure to get it started. So I think that street needs to be done. That's another, that's a policy or an ordinance or whatever we set, and it should, and here it is October, so it should have been done. It just got, I guess it just got forgotten, but, so. And the other thing is, and I'm going to make this statement because people have asked me to make it, Mr. Hall has made the statement that he's really busy, busy on other projects and doesn't have time to get every, do all this stuff. I'm, I'm sorry that I, I made you do 40 hours of work for nothing, because in my eyes, I think that if Light and Power is a board under us, and they have a policy, that we should be able to make them enforce that policy. So I apologize for wasting 40 hours of your time.
Those are your words, I never said wasted.
Well, but...
And I never said for nothing.
Okay, but I think, but we, nothing was, nothing was resolved, in my eyes, so I get to say it. The other thing is, we've been wasting countless hours and hundreds of thousands of dollars on the union contracts, and I think it's time that it gets done. Because I think that's what's wrong with half of this town, is we're, we're spending more time on everything, on that than, than the sidewalks, because maybe if we wouldn't have been spending all that time on the contracts, it wouldn't have got slipped, I wouldn't have missed the whole thing about the parking lot happening, and, and we would have discussed, maybe discussed that in council chambers before it got put on the agenda, put onto the ballot, you know, and maybe it would have, maybe it would have passed. But you know that I don't like to have things rushed through, I like to, I like to be able to read them. The other thing is, is I want a beginning and ending balance for every department in this city, and I would, and I want to know all the capital expenditures that we've had for the, for 2013. I want to know how much of the equipment fund was spent for, for last year and what it was spent on. I wasn't here all year long, and if there was, and if we didn't spend it, it should be carried over. The other thing is, is I have been looking and looking and looking, where's the money coming up, coming from to pay for the fire truck, and where did it come from last year? Out of what, out of what, what, what part of the budget? That's it, okay. I just, I'm just stating that, I'm stating this, I want to know. And I can't, I can't, I can't come into town and have a meeting with Mr. Hall during the day this time of year, because I have a company and I have to work, and most of it is out of town. And so, maybe we're going to have to talk on the phone, but, but the thing is, is the whole thing with Light and Power is not about anything but why it was done wrong, who inspected it, and that, that is the questions that I want to know. So I will go to their meeting, maybe if I can get back in town, I doubt it, but I'll probably be in Detroit. But, but the whole thing is, is I think it's a safety buy thing, and the comment was made, but who, who, how could that possibly happen? Well, it did happen. So I think, I, I just think that maybe Mr. Went's interpretation of the charter is totally different than mine, but it says there in the charter that we have general direction, and maybe, maybe we can't give them general direction now because the council doesn't want to do it, but 13 months from now, it might be different. And that's all I'd like to say tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Altav?
The planning commission meets next Monday, and local area recreational authority meets this coming Wednesday. So the only thing I have to report on is that we did, the planning commission had a joint meeting with local township and Bridge End Township. Those are now annual, and they seem to be always worthwhile. I would like to recommend that Parks Commission meet sometime within the next year with the local township Parks Commission. They have a new Parks Commission, I think five members, and it would be nice to interchange of ideas and suggestions on how maybe they could pick up some slack and we could relax a little bit, so. Anyway, that would be my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Allison?
Yes. No Arbor Board meeting, no LCTV Board meeting. The downtown historic commission did meet. We discussed some signage, got updates on grants, we also entertained proposals for a grant. So that was a very productive meeting. I also wanted, now that I've listened to Mr. Altav, talk about the last work session. I know it was reported that we were going to be doing uneven parking, but that was something we discussed and decided it was maybe best not to pursue at this time. And I also wanted to say that, like Mark said, he didn't have time to do everything. I tell my boss that too sometimes. Sometimes you have to pick and choose, there are so many hours in the day, and there's only so much one person can do, and I don't think, he said, "I don't have enough time to do this, I'm not doing it." He said, "If I don't, if I do this, then something else has got to go," and I think that's reasonable. You can't work 24/7. We need to let them know what our priorities are, that's what we're working on. And so by saying, "I don't have enough time," he meant, "What should I drop then?" And I've said that to my boss before too. "I can only do five reports a day. If you give me 10, choose which five you want done." So I just wanted to, to say that. I don't, I miss, maybe I misinterpreted, but I thought it was, "I can only do so much. What do you want me to do?" Also, the other thing was, as far as the police department comments, we have done this before, it's like sidewalks, how many times do we have to go over this? Does it hurt to look at again? No. Does it hurt to look at any department? No, but I don't want to keep going backwards and looking at the same reports over and over again and spending 40 hours looking at something that we did already. So I'm, I'm not interested in, in micromanaging. I think our manager is doing a good job. I don't think we need to go over every little detail and tell exactly who gets a raise and who works here and who works there and all that. I think that that's what he's there for. We hired him, it was unanimous hiring, I think he's doing a good job, and I think we need to stop micromanaging him. If we have an issue, we need to go to his office and discuss it with him, not bring laundry list to council meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Blue Light and Power will meet on Thursday night, so nothing yet on that. Chamber of Commerce Board Directors, of course, Harvest Festival is this weekend, so we're all looking forward to great weather and a lot of fun in our downtown area. And there's also a community cleanup that will be done in the morning down at the fairgrounds, so I think Melissa's got all that stuff on the Chamber of Commerce website, and I think there's a link from the city website for that. And the Wood Memorial Fund, met on Wednesday, September 24th. Dr. Gerard is looking to the future and perhaps stepping aside in the next year, and so we've been talking about various personnel changes within that committee. There's an investment strategy that's being looked at with the Grand Rapids Foundation, and the money's available this fall, $29,202. There will be a application process... There will be a application process. Applications to the Look Fund are due October 31st. And the committee will meet on Wednesday, November 19th, to consider those allocations. And I know that Mr. Mayor meant to say something about the Fire Open House on Wednesday night. Anyway, there's a fire, there's a, this, this is a fire awareness week and fire prevention week, and there's an open house at the fire station from 6:00 to 8:00 on Wednesday evening. Of course. Of course, of course. And I know Mrs. Ellison also meant to talk about any other loose ends here. The Grand Rapids Press had a wonderful picture, as well as a story about, small story, but they did what they could with the space that they had available about our museum. Nice little write-up, and we have the best darn little museum that there ever was. So, of that, Mr. Howell.
Thank you. Construction has begun for the O'Reilly Auto Parts Store on Main Street near Valley Vista. In addition to construction, the building, the contractor is responsible for installing water and sewer mains from the southwest corner of East East Harbor Roadblock to the intersection of Valley Vista. Wanted to know if that was going on. I mentioned M.D.A. already, there's strategic goals. And you had mentioned the Look Fund investments. We did meet with Grand Rapids Foundation today, and they will be putting together a draft agreement for our consideration. We'll have a discussion with the Look Committee, see if they're comfortable. Require council approval. Though they're moving forward on investing Look Funds with the Grand Rapids Foundation. And then a group is making a field trip to Grand Rapids, visit Blue 35, and see if that concept can be brought to the Lowell area in some way. I've added to your manager's report, if anybody's interested, I can give you a link for the website for Blue 35. The link can be interesting on there. And then four other things that I made notes on. One is your reaction on LCTV tonight. Remember, we discussed it at our workshop, that we ran some discussion tonight, and if you wanted to move forward, you're gonna direct me to create, have the city treaty created resolution. That didn't happen. You did it through a motion. That's fine. I was just curious, any of the comments about rushing things through? Smith Street, the update on that is that the contractor met with Dan last week, and that's scheduled to be done, I don't know exactly when, but in the next few weeks, I believe. The other thing that we're looking at, we've already had a discussion with peer forums, and as a, with a, as a resident of that area, Councilmember Altav, you should note that we're planning on coming down Chatham Street as well and doing some skip patching on some of the bad spots there. So as long as the contractor is out there in Smith Street, that's not being paid by the city, but we're gonna talk to the contractor as long as they're in the area to do some skip patching in the street right here, right away. So that's the update on Smith Street, strategic plan. I appreciated your comments about certain things being number one, and remember at our workshop, we have this list of items. I have returned from two of you. I have a promise from another one of you to have this returned. I have returned from three of you, a promise from another one to have them returned. And this is how you set priorities. And this is how the council sets priorities by walking through this. I know it's labor intensive. I know it takes some time, but this is how we create the basis for the council to set priorities, so I know how to spend my time, and what's important to you as a council as a whole, because you do act as a public body, not as individuals. And then finally, Susie, if you would switch over to number four, I'm gonna finish by taking out the trash and show you that Scott and Jill collected the trash cans today downtown. And Dan got present and having them sandblasted and powder coated. And there's a couple of lids we're gonna have to replace, but that's what they're gonna look like when they're done, and they will match up with the cans we put on the burger walk. So just wanted to let you know that that is going to be happening. It has to be worked on, and that's standing my report.
Thank you. And what's that?
No appointments. You don't, how often do you get to say that?
Not, no.
I move that we go into closed session, as allowed under the Open Meetings Act, to discuss union negotiations strategy.
I will second.
I voted secondly to go into closed session, and for this, we need a roll call.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Altav?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes. Thank you very much.